Oh.
Please tell them I'll never forget it.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience. Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, July 13, 2017. And may I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Please be advised that Commissioners Vice President Stephen Klein and Commissioner Jimmy DiPulcito are excused this evening. Would everyone please rise for the Plague of Allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce before we get started that there was an executive session held on June 30, 2017 by the Abington Township Board of Commissioners to discuss personnel matters. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner John Spiegelman, who wants to make a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
And this is regarding the 2017 Robert W. Montgomery Award.
Mr. President? This, uh...
It's not on.
It's not on?
It's not on.
Clearing off to a crisp.
Do you want to switch?
Is that going to hear me? Is this on?
It is not.
It was.
Yeah. All right. The light's on.
My apologies, everyone. Mr. President, my fellow Commissioners, members of Township staff and our audience, it is my pleasure to call up to the podium the winner of, the very deserving winner, of the 2017 Robert Montgomery Award, Linda Ritter. This is Linda's honor, so I won't drone on, but I will say that Linda is the kind of resident that exemplifies so many of the ways that our community is the amazing one that it is. And she's frankly the type of resident that makes any Commissioner happy. She has spent years using her education, her skills, as a landscape designer on a totally voluntary basis to beautify our township in ways that have quite literally won awards. The work, I think a lot of people probably familiar with the garden that she created, designed and created at the Levy Building of Abington Hospital, which is actually a Blue Ribbon Award winner from the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society. In addition, she has created the gardens that surround the sign areas that invite people into many of our parks, like Baderwood Park and Cressmont Park. And also, she's created gardens, you know, right in the Little Wood 11 section of Baderwood, Long Highland Avenue, Wantamaker Road and Bader Road. And in addition, Linda and her husband Walt are really, they're just, they're wonderful neighbors. They really care very personally about the well-being of our community. They're very attentive to everything that goes on in the neighborhood, and it's just, it's a great honor to be able to present this. So Linda, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read your plaque, and then it's, then it's all you, I'll stop talking. Certificate of Accommodation Presented to Linda Ritter. The Abington Township Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere appreciation for your outstanding contribution in promoting, preserving, and protecting our community's natural environment. Your long-term care and volunteering in maintaining the Abington Hospital Garden at the Levy Medical Center, which received a Blue Ribbon from the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society, garden areas around Abington Park signs such as Cressmont and Baderwood Parks, in addition to garden areas at the corner of Highland Avenue, Wantamaker and Bader Roads exemplifies the spirit of this environmental leadership award. The Board of Commissioners, in the name of the entire township, shows its appreciation for your community involvement and dedication to Abington Township by presenting you with the 2017 Robert W. Montgomery Junior Award. Linda, congratulations. So well deserved.
Say a few words?
Sure, I'll say a few. I'm so honored and I'm touched, and I thank the board members and all the members of EIC, which I see are in the green shirts, for nominating me and choosing me for this award. Creating gardens, planting them, maintaining them for the people of Abington, but other people get to enjoy them too, is a labor of love, and I've enjoyed it, and I hope I can continue to do it for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda Ritter, and thank you, Commissioner John Spiegelman. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chief John Livinggood for a swearing-in.
Thank you, President Luker. Tonight, we will be officially promoting Jennifer Doyle to the position of Sergeant in the Abington Township Police Department. Before we ask District Justice Kessler to swear Jennifer in, I'd like Jennifer to step forward as I tell you a little bit about her. Face the audience, there, Jen. Jen is originally from Pittsburgh and graduated with honors from Delaware County Community College with an Associate's Degree in Administration of Justice. Jen served three years with the Center County Sheriff's Office as a Deputy Sheriff and was awarded the Best Overall Student Pennsylvania Deputy Sheriff's Education and Training Academy. Jen joined Abington Township Police Department in 2005, and during the past 12 years has served in a number of special assignments and units. These include serving as a dare officer, field training officer, bike unit, honor guard, liaison to youth aid panel, and the one that she is best known for as a canine officer. If anyone is better known in our community than Jen Doyle, it is probably her canine partner, Bella. Bella is the first female dog, and Jen is the first female dog handler in the history of Abington Township's canine unit. Together, the team of Jen and Bella have not only successfully fought crime, but have won the respect and admiration of hundreds of our residents. In addition, Bella has won the hearts of many children with whom she has peacefully and playfully interacted during their many demos. The team has won numerous awards and distinctions, including second place at the Brad Fox Iron Dog Challenge, second place all-around best canine team at the prestigious United States Police Canine Association's Patrol Dog Trials, and from Representative Madeleine Dean, the team received a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania House of Representatives Citation for Commitment to Excellence in Policing and Canine Deployments. Additionally, Sergeant Doyle and canine Bella have earned their National Odor Recognition Certification through the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms for the dedication, uh, sorry, the detection of explosives, which unfortunately has become a skill that is more and more in demand in today's society. Sergeant Doyle is also an instructor for Abington Township's new Dog Walk and Watch Program. I now ask that District Justice John Kessler administer the oath, and that Jennifer's father, Leo Doyle, step forward to pin the badge on her following oath. So Sergeant, please repeat after me. After I say aye, please state your name. Aye?
Aye, Jennifer Doyle.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws?
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Abington?
And the Township of Abington.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As a Sergeant for Abington Township?
As a Sergeant for Abington Township.
And will obey the rules and regulations?
And will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures?
Policies and procedures.
Governing all sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department?
Governing all sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department.
Congratulations, Sergeant. Bella's not here tonight because, as Jen points out, she didn't help read the books or study for the test. Jen did that all by herself. So Sergeant Doyle, if you'd please introduce the rest of your family, they're here tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for this privilege, Board of Commissioners, Chief Livinggood, Deputy Chief Malloy, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to represent the department in a new and exciting way, I appreciate it. I'd like to introduce my father, Leo Doyle, and my stepmother Rita Doyle, on the N, my fantastic brother Bob, and, excuse me, Rob, his beautiful wife Carrie, my niece Cara, my sister Bernadette Wilkinson, my nephew Matthew, my niece Pamela, and my nephews Danny and Kevin. They're like my family here in Abington Township, even though my family lives far away in Pittsburgh. I just wanna, I look around the room and I see a lot of people that have been here with me since the beginning. I see Lisa Burton, who was actually on my oral interview panel. I see my two FTOs who helped me get through that hard year here, and I see Sergeant Toledo, who went through the academy with me. I just wanna say thank you so much for the support that you've given me throughout the years. Thank you.
It was almost exactly a year ago, in fact, it was July 11, 2016, that Sarah Packer walked into Abington Township Police Department to file a report that her adopted daughter, 14-year-old Grace Packer, was missing from her home on Tennis Avenue and Ardsley. The case was assigned to Detective Cindy Pettenato, who is extremely intuitive and known for her complete, thorough, and well-documented investigations. Very quickly, Cindy instinctively knew that something was wrong with this case and that this mother was not reacting like a normal mother would. Cindy's investigation was tenacious and unrelenting. She kept asking Sarah Packer for pictures and additional information. Sarah was not completely uncooperative, but she certainly wasn't cooperating and supplying the information that Cindy had asked for. When Sarah Packer moved without notifying Cindy or anyone else at APD, Cindy tracked her down. Cindy traveled out of state on this investigation and finally had Grace Packer entered into NAMUS, the National Missing and Unidentified Persons System. Sadly, we all know what happened to Grace Packer. There were hundreds of hours of investigative resources that went into this investigation, but the key to the success in this case was the tenacious, unrelenting investigative work of Detective Cindy Pettenato. NAMUS is now using Cindy's investigation as the textbook way that a case should be handled in their instructions to other investigators. It would have been easy to have accepted the mother's explanation that Grace was staying with relatives or was in another rehab, but not with Cindy Pettenato. Cindy was the voice for this poor little girl who could not speak for herself. Cindy was there for Grace, and she will continue to be there until justice is achieved for Grace Packer. So Cindy, I'd like to have you step forward. And Commissioner Schreiber, if you'd come down and present us plaque, please. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a Class III Commendation, which in our policy is required to be presented in front of the Board of Commissioners.
Now, I get to see if this is on or not this time? Okay. So, I am honored to give this to you, the excellent work. This is a Class III level of accommodation presented to Detective Cynthia Pettenato in recognition of your excellent investigative skills, which resulted in the arrest of the murderers of Grace Packer. An ordinary missing juvenile case that developed into a horrific murder investigation, which was successfully solved due to your dedication, thoroughness, and attention to detail. Because of this, her killers were brought to justice. We are very honored to give this to you.
Cindy, you wanna introduce your family or anything?
Everybody else that's on the side of her belongs to me.
That's it? Cindy, are you sure you don't wanna?
No. She was never a dare officer.
Now, the family members of those acknowledged this evening want to leave, now's the opportunity. Nathan, we'll take a two-minute break. Thank you.
Yeah, she's over there.
Of the swearing-in, did you get video of?
No, I just took a picture.
Okay, me too. It's like I couldn't remember the word swearing in.
1986, that's a nice game. This game, yeah.
Mostly the thing.
Was she okay up until, was she okay?
I mean, there's a lot of rumors that's, we're not sure. And it's good. Did the right thing. Took care of it.
Nathan, we good?
Never came back, you know.
We'll continue with our meeting. At this time, I'll ask for approval of the minutes, and I'll call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber filling in for Vice President Stephen Klein.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes of June 8, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting, an ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, I'll open the meeting up for public comment on agenda items only. Agenda items only. Any comments from the public? If there are, please acknowledge our three-minute speaking rule. Please come to the podium stating your name and address for the record.
Caught me again because I don't have my questions separated out into agenda and non-agenda items. I will tell you, though, Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and I will tell you that I have had some very nice encouragement, just in a brief email, that perhaps our new manager will work the way we should have been working for 11 years and answer some of the things that instead seem to get perpetually here beating dead horses. And I would like to change that model as much as I think you guys should want to change that model, but it comes from getting answers to those questions. So, I actually do not have these separated out, so I have to see which ones are agenda items and which ones are not. So the... All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them go and trust that, I'm gonna trust that the manager will work with me and will get some of these answers behind the scenes, okay? And then I have some other one or two things for later. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your trust. Thank you. Any other comments from the public on agenda items? If there are none, we'll move into our first agenda, which is Public Works, and I'll call on Commissioner Tom Hacker, Director.
Thank you, President Luker. Public Works has four items of business this evening. The first is PW1, and this is a motion to purchase decorative street-side trash containers and automated trash containers for use by the refuse department from the refuse fund balance in the amount of $40,000, and ISO move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, from staff? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. PW2 is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-021, authorizing the Township Manager to sign agreements and applications sent to PennDOT for traffic signal approvals, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. PW3 is a motion to approve Pinoni Associates' Proposal for Reimbursement Agreement Supplement E for Edgehill Road Tyson Avenue Flood Control Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of $144,905, which included services for the MS4 grant design. Eighty percent of the funding will be reimbursed from the state in the amount of $115,924, and 20 percent from the MS4 program in the amount of $28,981, and ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. And PW4, and before I read the motion, I have a question for Township Manager Manfredi. Are we voting on this as a block, or should I read each of these separately and have a vote on the first and second portion?
First and second.
Okay, thank you. So PW4, the first part of this is a motion to reject all bids received from the 2016-2017 HUD program, 1,000-block Edgehill Road and the 2,300-block of Parkview Avenue curb and sidewalk projects, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And the second portion is a motion to supplementally appropriate $50,000 of the FY 2017 General Obligation Note budgeted funds from the Church Street and Holly Tree Road project to the 2016-2017 HUD program 1,000-block Edgehill Road curb and sidewalk project, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners?
Could I?
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Glassby first.
Okay, I just, since we just saw this much, is there some explanation?
Mr. Spiegelman, would you like to address that, or should we?
It's, it's your call, I'd be happy to.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Spiegelman.
Well, actually, this is what I was gonna comment on. So, thanks to the help and cooperation of a lot of folks, including President Luker, Manager Manfredi, Engineer Powers, Finance Director Barron, all working together, and of course, Community Development Director Strather, we're able to reallocate the HUD funds, which were insufficient for the quotes that came in from these projects, reallocate them to just the crucial 1,000-block of Edgehill sidewalk project, and remove, or not remove, but reallocate funds from a sewer project that, in effect, didn't really need to happen in order to make up the difference and get these sidewalks built in time for the, for the school year.
So it is enough, then, enough funding?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll, you know, I'll speak more profusely during my closing comments, but I'm extremely grateful to everyone who helped make this happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Run a vote.
Okay. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Oh, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. And I don't know who it is, is the Commissioner who represents Church Street and Holly Tree Road in agreement with this?
Yeah, it's me. So, yeah. I'm gonna go with, yeah.
Okay.
And actually, this is a, this is a, this has an extra bonus for the folks on Church, Holly Tree, and Old Orchard, because now they are gonna get paved, their long-awaited resurfacing at the end of this month instead of at the end of forever. So, everybody wins.
Commissioner Spiegelman, you did a good job when this circling the wagons and making sure all the bases were covered before you proceeded with this. Thank you.
Thank you for your help, Mr. President.
No problem, sir. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners or staff? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, President Luker. That concludes the business of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. This time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement and Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety, will come forward.
Thank you, President Luker. We have two agenda items. I just wanna make mention to everybody, there is a memo that you have in front of you which pertains to PS1 with the additional streets that were added per our conversation at the Public Safety meeting last week. So PS1 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2140, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3 Parking Regulations, Section 25, parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here at a corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing, and Section 28 Special Purpose Parking Zones for adoption at the August 10 Board of Commissioners meeting, an ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And PS2 is a motion to appoint candidate Kenneth Witter from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided he successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training. Appointment will be effective September 5, 2017, an ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff?
Commissioner, sorry.
Can I make a quick comment on PS1? I'm sorry I didn't do it sooner. I'd like to thank Chief Livinggood, Chief Manfredi, Officer Alfred, Lieutenant Kelly Warner, for just taking a fresh new look at these intersections in Ward 6 and coming up with a plan and an idea. This one intersection is right near North Hills Park, and I really appreciate that, taking a fresh look at it. Thank you.
Mr. President?
I have a question for the chief. These four-way stop signs, I thought they were mandated by the state?
Mandated by the state?
In other words, the township has no authority to put four-way stop signs up, just the state? I mean, that's what I was told.
No, we can, we can put them up if they meet the criteria.
Is that right? Okay. All right, thank you.
Question, Dennis, good question, 'cause I was led to believe the same thing.
Yeah, I was told that.
Perhaps we could add a little clarity to it. Number one, please understand that those three streets will be added to the ordinance as referenced by Commissioner Schreiber. But specifically, what is done is, there are PennDOT standards and what's called the 408 specifications that Officer Freed or traffic engineers will apply in determining whether or not you can have a four-way stop. So, you have to meet certain thresholds in order for that to occur, but as long as it meets those thresholds, you can go ahead and do it.
The municipality can go ahead and do it.
Correct, as long as it meets those thresholds. So, it is relooking at these. He was able to make a determination that, in one case, the site triangle was such that it was close enough that he can, in fact, improve.
Excuse me, would it be possible to get a list or summary of those standards? Because I was under the same impression that PennDOT was controlling everything, and I've been told that over the years, that we can install stop signs because of that. So if we could have that breakdown somehow, that we can take a look at it, that would be very helpful when we're communicating with residents whether or not it's something we need to or should consider pursuing.
Sure. It's the section of what's called 408 specifications, we can get that for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Sanchez?
I just wanted to chime in on the heels of Commissioner Kalanowski, I always remiss to thank you for this kind of long, taking another look at this long problematic one to Chief Livinggood, Manager Manfredi, and of course, Officer Freed as well. It's gonna be a big safety improvement right there on Riddle. It's going to be a big safety improvement right there on Riddle Road, so looking forward to that, and the resident, I know, will be, you know, ecstatic when I let them know the residents, I should say, several in that area. So thank you.
You're welcome. And we'll pass that on to Officer Freed.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes, so, um, thank you all for those comments. They were on PS1. We have now made the motion for PS2, and it has been seconded. So are there any comments? I think is where you're at.
Right. So it's moved and seconded for PS2.
Mm-hmm.
I got lost there for a minute. Okay. Any other comments on PS2? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you very much, President Luker. Tonight, Public Affairs has two agenda items. The first is PA1. This is a motion to adopt Resolution-17-020, approving Abington Township's 2017 One-Year Action Plan, Plan and Community Development Block Grant, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? Staff? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And our second and final item is PA2. This is a motion to accept the bid from Hirschberg Mechanical LLC in the amount of $102,545, $84,000, $84,000 expense to come from account number 07-23-071-7494, with the additional expense to come from permanent improvement fund balance. This is for the Abington Free Library Condenser Replacement Project, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Farron?
Thank you, President Luker. I just want to thank Nancy for the breakdown that we have in here explaining the differences between the bids, the low bid of $102,000 versus high bids of, you know, the high $186,000, explaining that you went back and you got a detailed report which would justify the bid, I think, a very, very helpful from our, from our point of view, understanding where the money's going. So thank you for doing that.
Good compliment. Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners?
Just want to, I just want to go ahead and second that. And also, Nancy, thank you very much, you know, for your, for your stewardship of this and all these other crazy things that come up at the library. You know, you, they, you get, you get something tossed at you, and you always hit it out of the park, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the Public Affairs business for this month.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, Commissioner Tom Hecker, Assistant Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. This evening, the Finance Committee has four items for consideration. The first is FC1, and this is a motion to, A, approve the May expenditures as previously circulated to the Board in the amount of $3,939,695.06, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,804,151.58, and B, to authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of August 2017, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? Staff? Hearing none? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Hecker, Spiegelman?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Farron?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Hecker?
Yes.
Kalanowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. FC2, this is a motion to approve the advance in travel expense activity for May 2017 as previously circulated to the Board. Advance in travel expense reports were $0.00 and $4,731.53, respectively. The five-month expenses have totaled $12,624.19, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. FC3 is a motion to approve the Clearing Fund, the Deferred Revenue Expense Activity, and Petty Cash Balances for the month of May as previously circulated to the Board. Clearing Fund receipts and dispersments for the month of May 2017 were $1,093.52 and $174.95, respectively. The Deferred Revenue Expense Receipts and Dispersments for the month of May 2017 were $100 and $1,129, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? From staff? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. And FC4 is a motion to accept the December 31, 2016 Township of Abington CAFER and audited financial statements, single audit report, tax office financial statements, and agreed-upon procedures as presented by Township Independent Auditors B, Bergwall &amp; Company, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? If there are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. President Luker, that concludes the business of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. That concludes our formal agenda, so at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment or non-agenda items. Any comments from the public on non-agenda items?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So first of all, I see that we have a new face in the room, and the public would like to get to know new people as well as, you know, so that when we come to the township we know, or when you're talking in here, so we have somebody new over there. Will they be introduced? We'll ask that they get introduced, and also, when people retire, we'd like to know. So Matt Lahazo, who was here for, I can't tell you how many years, okay? When he retired, wasn't a single word. Nobody knew he retired.
That was his choice.
So, can we do that?
Excellent point. Manager Manfredi?
Teresa Castarina, walking in the office of the Township Manager. Okay. Welcome. Okay. So, one of the things that I very much would like to know is, if we can get questions answered. So, that was our rules when we set up the speaking rules, was that if a question couldn't be answered at the meeting, the answer would be forthcoming later. So I asked Commissioner Spiegelman, for instance, at the Public Affairs meeting, three questions. He said, "Thank you for your comments." So, how do we change that model? That doesn't work, okay? So we really do need to get these questions answered. So Mr. Manfredi has been very gracious. We'll see if that is going to produce the answers, and that would be the right way to do it. But from the Commissioners' bench, that is how it was set up to go, and I would appreciate if we could get that. Commissioner Sanchez, for instance, I had asked, you know, can we figure out what the Code Department needs, and can we work on getting, you know, we need, there needs to be some way that citizens can work with their government, not just say, "Well, everything's broken. Okay, thank you for your comments." Okay? So hopefully, Commissioner Sanchez and Commissioner Spiegelman, you'll get back to me, and we'll see if we can do something about those problems and get them fixed, okay? That would be wonderful if we could. And the other thing is, we just did the streets thing where we read the whole thing again, and I thought maybe Commissioner Schreiber might have taken a minute to say what those streets were at this meeting, so that we could get started right away. We said we have three bites at the apple, but if every bite at the apple, nobody understands what's being said, that's like no bites at the apple until the thing is passed, okay? So I don't understand why, but it seems like tonight those names should have been listed in there. They weren't, they weren't listed in there again. And, and that's just mentioning what street is getting a stop sign or whatever, you know, just to help the public know. And, and I have a question for you. Was it a flawless CAFER report? The audit report? Was it, was it flawless?
Does anyone want to answer that? Mr. Farron?
Yes, the audit was flawless.
Okay. Wonderful. Glad to hear that.
Thank you, sir.
And then, I will just say again, you know, that, that we have safety issues, and I'm waiting for particularly the Director of Public Safety and the President of the Board to get serious and actually ask what they are if you don't know. Apparently, you know, we're feigning that we don't know any of them, and I would beg to differ with you, because many of them have been brought to this podium, and there are many more, and it does take a sit-down to do that right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public on non-agenda items? If there are none, that concludes our formal agenda, and at this time, I'll open the floor for comments from Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Bowman.
No comment tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Farron?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate and thank everybody at the Greater Glenside Patriotic Association for an incredible Fourth of July parade. It was hot, but it was well-attended, it was well-packed, it was busy, it was fun to be a part of, and I want to thank all the Commissioners who helped and marched along as well, and all the staff involved. It's a lot of volunteers, the Police Department, all of our fire departments, our second alarmers. It's a great event, so thank you to everybody involved. I want to congratulate the library, especially with our director sitting over here with the, I love the movie idea, on Friday afternoons, the free movies, it's a great family activity. I hope the kids' summer club is going well. Obviously, as an educator, I want all the kids to be reading as much as possible, and I hope the food for fines, which is another great idea, went very well. I'd love to hear, maybe next, would you have a report?
We, we, we received 1,040 pounds worth of food and personal items, and we waived $1,300 worth of fines.
Wow.
And acceptance of those items.
That's great. That's such a great idea. So congratulations on that. That's a great idea.
It was the interfaith food cupboard, and it was a partnership.
Right. Great. Thank you for sharing that. I want to give congratulations as well to all those involved with the summer youth meal service. It's a need that is very quietly affecting many of our youth even here in Abington, so I know it's not over yet, but it's a great idea if everybody came up with it, and I hope that keeps going well. This Saturday, two big events, and I'm sure other Commissioners will echo at least some of these. One is the Filla Food Event by our Police Department, our second alarmers, Roslyn and McKinley Fire Departments, the Abington Township Police Association in conjunction with Giant. So at both Giant locations in Abington, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, they're trying to fill up as many of the emergency vehicles as possible with non-perishable food items. So I would encourage everybody, if you can, to get out to one of those two Giants and do that. You can bring food, or you can purchase food in the store and carry it out. And then the second event is the Penbryn Crestmont Swim Team Competition this Saturday morning at 9:00. It is an annual event. I think Penbryn has been behind, and Commissioner Hecker probably knows the record better than I do with, as a Crestmont pool family. We are a Penbryn pool family. We're hoping to take the mantle away from them this Saturday, but it's a, it's a fun, you know, intra-tauntship competition with the kids, have a good time with it. It's an exciting way to spend a Saturday morning, so good luck to both teams, although obviously, we want, we want Penbryn to win. I would think this week, I just looked it up. Crestmont this year. Means you bring the coffee. We'll bring the coffee. We'll bring the coffee. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gillespie?
Thank you. I first of all want to commend, congratulate Jen Doyle. I met her when she first came here, and it's so great to see her become a sergeant. She's done an excellent job. And Cindy Petnada, who I've known since she was a kid. Her dad was on the police force, so she comes from a police family. She's doing an excellent job. And of course, the Greater Glenside Patriotic Association has to thank so many people. Commissioner Kalanowski, first of all, because the VFW does host the morning, some people that come to eat, and then you host all the buses that come. If anybody ever saw the beginning of that parade, they would say, "How do you ever get it going?" Because it is amazing. Thanks to Jack Murphy, the morning program. He brings, he brings us those pop-up tent things so that we have, we can have cover to give out the food and the hot dogs and lemonade and such. Tom McIneney and the Emergency Management, Abington Township Police Department. I don't think people really realize how much they do. We have a crowd, and you know, this is a different world we live in. Those police are out there, and you don't even realize they're among you, and that goes for the whole day, and they do an excellent job with the, and actually, Public Works. We had dump trucks, we had across the side streets, which was wonderful protection for everyone. So everybody was really on the ball with that. And to all the volunteers, it was, it was great. And again, thanks for all that support that run. I appreciate it, and for all that get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hecker?
Thank you, President Luker. Chief Livinggood, your description tonight of Detective Petnada's work was inspiring. That tragedy has left deep emotional scars throughout the community, and I think her work is helping to bring healing to many, so it was nice to see that recognized. And I just have to put in a plug for Sergeant Doyle as well. I'm fortunate to have her as a neighbor around the corner, and it's nice to see when good things happen to good people who are trying to do good for the community. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. Commissioner Kalanowski?
Yeah, I'll say the same thing, Tom. Great saying all those good things. John, great job. Really appreciate the leadership in the Police Department in Abington. Real quick, I'd like to congratulate two families in Ward 6. Second Lieutenant Eric Berger this weekend was commissioned into the Marine Corps League. He's a graduate from Monmouth, and I'm very proud of him and his family are just wonderful people. Last night at the ESPYS, Matt Rambo, who is the number-one lacrosse player in the nation, was nominated as NCAA Best Male Athlete. I won't tell you if he won or lose, but he was with his dad last night, and it was good to see them at the ESPYS in LA. Real quick, Van Struthers, I can't tell you, thank you so much for sticking with the program with the free meal program. Lori Schreiber, Wayne Luker, we'll all say the same thing. This would have not continued if we didn't have your support and your belief that this could happen. It's growing. There, I got to say, there's no qualifications for anybody in Abington or anybody in the whole country to come out between 11:30 and 12:30 at Crestmont Pool and get a free lunch. whole country to come out between 11:30 and 12:30 at Crestmont Pool and get a free lunch. We're there. We have a great staff there supporting us now, and thank you again for keeping up with us and putting up with us. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Van. Commissioners Oppone?
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo Commissioner Hecker's sentiments and congratulate Sergeant Doyle, who is a really legitimately wonderful human being and an outstanding law enforcement professional. A very well-deserved promotion. And of course, the amazing work and appropriately commended work of Detective Petnada. I just, I want to say again that I really, I'm so grateful for all of the members of the different departments who work together to help keep the Edgehill Road, Thousand Block of Edgehill Road, Water Tower Block sidewalk project alive. I mean, there are times, pretty frequently, when, you know, we obviously, we all appreciate our incredible township staff and our department heads. And there are times when we praise on them after, say, a huge snowstorm, or, you know, the coordination of a major event every year, like the Glenside Parade and the rest of the Fourth of July celebration. But sometimes, it's the amazing way they work on these small-ball orchestrations that really are incredible. This was a project that was really in jeopardy, and everybody working together, and certainly with our new township manager, made everything come together in the span of a week and keep these sidewalks alive. And now, we're looking at the kids walking to Copper Beach, and the kids walking to the junior high in the other direction to finally be able to walk on some nice, safe sidewalks for the first day of the school year. So I'm deeply grateful. And I just want to say another thanks as well to Alfred, who came out and worked with my neighbors on an intersection that everyone knows and everyone hates, Edgehill and Horace. We're really, we're taking some steps to make that a safer intersection, and that could not happen without Officer Freed. So Chief Livinggood, if you could please pass that along to him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, President Luker. As Commissioner Farron mentioned, one of the giant grocery stores participating in the Fila Vehicle Food Drive this weekend is in Ward Three. I would encourage everybody that can make it there and can contribute to come out. It's really a wonderful event. It's actually my favorite of all the events that I've participated in since becoming a commissioner. Seeing how much food we can get into those cars is quite amazing, and the fact that people keep, you know, even at 12:00, as it approaches, wanting to put more in, is really an inspiring thing. We're doing a lot of good things. So please come out, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the back wall in the alcove there. The artwork that you're seeing for the first time on the canvases is all done by Powell Children. And we're very lucky tonight to have the art director, who has worked with the children and instructed the children, and she volunteers just about every weekend, Deborah Sloan. Deborah, would you stand up, because you really deserve -- Deborah works very hard for the children to be able to express themselves on canvas, and I hope that you all take a minute and look at the artwork directly behind her. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, and thank you, Mrs. Sloan. Excellent job. Commissioner Markman.
No comment at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Streiber.
Thank you. Thank you for changing the art. I'm glad you pointed that out, because I always notice what's up on the walls in here, and it's really nice to see that. I want to congratulate Sergeant Doyle and Bella, Sergeant Bella, I guess she is now. That's wonderful, and I was honored to present the award to Detective Petnada. I just have two other quick things. One is, I want to say, I don't know if the fireworks were moved a little bit, but I can actually see them from my porch now, which was a wonderful thing. So thank you for that.
It was a different company.
Oh, okay.
Better fireworks.
I like where they were. That was good. It worked out well for us, so thank you. It was a very nice display this year. And I want to reiterate what was said about the lunch program, and thank you. And we do have a really good staff working there now. It's really coming together. And so if everybody who's listening can spread the word so we get children to come out, we do have a good number now, but we can use more to come out. I mean, it's for them, and we want to have as many children as we can get to come out. So it's last, it's going till August, help me with the date. Eighteenth. Monday through Friday, 11:30 to 12:30 at Crestmont Park, unless it rains. Okay. Thank you. That's it this evening.
Thank you. And I also compliment Mrs. Sloan. I love the artwork, and it's more evenly spaced now, so it's very, very well-done. And lastly, my thanks to the Abington Township Police Department, who along with the Philadelphia Police Department recently made a very quick apprehension of a suspect of a bank robbery in Abington Township. So I just want to compliment the chief and the staff for a job well-done. So at this time, that concludes our formal agenda, and I'd like to turn the program back over to Commissioner Michael Markman, who has a statement.
So I actually thought about putting a written statement together, but I felt it was less sincere. You know, I've been an Abington resident for 22 years. I'm in my third house in Abington right now. And this community is incredibly important to me. I was the chair of the Planning Commission and on the Board of Commissioners. And running for commissioner, you know, one of the important things to me was economic development and development of our commercial corridors. For us to remain strong as a township, it's important for the commercial corridors to stay strong, and it puts less of a tax burden on the residents. And I think I've worked hard to achieve that with the Economic Development Committee. There's come a time where, you know, I'm here, and I want to contribute back to my community in many different ways. And it's come to a point now where I had, I have an opportunity to contribute to the community professionally, and through that potentially, not definitely, but potentially with developing in the township, was something that could come in front of the Board of Commissioners. I've been advised by lawyers that I could just recuse myself and develop in front of the, you know, in the township. But I just, I, you know, I went through that thought process, and I just didn't think it was appropriate for me to be a member of the Board of Commissioners and conduct business in the township in a way that potentially could be viewed as negative and could potentially cause problems here. So as a result of my business situation, and nothing's been submitted, and nothing's happened, it's just a potential situation, I've come to the point where I feel it's appropriate that I resign from the Board of Commissioners effective tomorrow. You know, the funny, I, you know, I'm doing this with, you know, I didn't run again, probably, this was part of the reason, but this has come a little quicker than I thought it would. And obviously, I'm kind of emotional about it. You know, it's just, in my mind, with, you know, the way the township works, it's just the right thing to do. With that in mind, I just want to thank everybody here. I mean, I'm in front of townships. I'm probably in front of 10 townships right now. And this Board of Commissioners is one of the most devoted group of people in any township I encounter. And the public service that you all do is admirable, and it's been a real honor to serve with you. Our staff has been incredibly responsive to anything I've needed, and I really appreciate everything that's happened here. And this is a great place, and this is where I'm going to make my home for the next 20 years. So I'm hoping, this is where I am, and I hope to make the township into a better community this way, as I have in the past, I hopefully have in the past, through the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. I want to thank my constituents for giving me the opportunity to be on the board. And I just, I just, you know, feel, you know, this is a great community, and I feel everybody in this room is a huge part of that. And I just want to thank you for that, and, you know, just say thank you for the opportunity I was given. Thank you, everybody here for being who you are. And that's basically my statement.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept Commissioner Michael Markman's resignation.
Second. The motion has to be --
It's moved in seconded. Any comments from commissioners? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes to accept.
We don't like to see him go. We don't like to see him leave. Hard to say. Hard to.
Well, the motion passes to accept Commissioner Markman's resignation. So at this time, I'll open the floor to any public comment on this motion only. Okay. Comments from Commissioner Myers?
I'm not sure I'm doing this at the right time, and I hope this is okay with you, Michael. I would like to make a motion from the floor for Michael Markman to continue on the Economic Development Committee.
I would second that, if that's allowed.
Okay. Manager, Mayor Freddie.
I think the motion, you have a motion in the second on the floor to accept the resignation.
Right.
We did that.
We did that.
Was there public -- I didn't hear the --
We did. It kind of went a little out of order.
Okay. So we were accepting public comment and --
We should have taken public comment before.
Before the vote.
Before the vote.
Okay. I'm sorry. Public comment before the -- okay.
I'll reserve my motion.
And as soon as that's cleared up, then your motion's.
I'll reserve, I'll hold my motion.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
Can I make a public comment?
You have to. No, hold it, hold it, please.
I think we all do.
Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I was somebody who was bullied 14 times in one meeting alone by the gentleman at hand, and I feel very differently about the push towards all of the commercial that is supposedly improving the township. So I would certainly not like to see the economic development continuation. I think we need ordinary citizens to be on the Economic Development Committee and develop their town the way they want to see it, not the way somebody who's making money is going to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I'm so sorry.
Okay. Here we are now. Can we accept comments from commissioners? Commissioner Rothman.
I just want to say, it's sad to see Commissioner Markman go. You have helped me over the course of the first year and a half of my term, and your insight into things that I don't have experience with, I feel is very useful to the people on the board. And so I just wanted to publicly thank you for that, and I know you'll stick around and be available to us as a resource, but thank you very much for the way you've handled all the questions we've brought to you and your insight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Kalanowski.
Commissioner Mark, Michael. We've had some conversations, and you've, I hate to see you go. You've brought honesty here. You've always been honest, you've always been truthful, and continue to be that person you are. I hope to see you around. I hope to run into you and your wife, and I'm glad you're a part of Abington. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hecker.
Michael, you're a gentleman, and you're a man with pure intent and humility, despite your accomplishment. And your motivation to do good in the community is something I found inspirational. And so, you know, when we've at times crept toward nonsense as a group, you have been one to stick to the facts and try to bring reason to the debate and the discussion, and I think that's going to be missed. And I hope we can continue to call on you when we lose our way from time to time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, President Luker. Mike, you made up a point about the people in this room that we all appreciate, and I hope you realize you're one of those people who helped do that over your time here as commissioner. And I would echo the comments that have already been said, that your frankness and your insight have been very helpful, your clarity in seeing a problem or an event or situation, and being able to spin it into an opportunity is something that I think is good for all of us, and something that I'm going to try to model going forward as well. So it's sad to see you go, and Esma, thank you for your time here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Commissioner Markman, if there is a more down-to-earth real estate developer in this world, I certainly haven't met him or her. Your contributions to this board that I think everyone has well-described will be missed. Personally, I am deeply grateful for everything you've contributed to the Old York Siskiyou Hannah Project, and there's no way we're letting you go from that. But you are a classy guy, you are, you're a smart guy, but you don't need to rub it in anybody's face. It's really been an honor to serve with you, and I'm glad to call you my friend, and that certainly will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Michael, I think what you're doing is honorable. I can certainly understand, I think everyone understands why you're doing it and the nature of your business. And you set a really good example for all of us in that vein. And whether it's a perceived conflict or a true conflict, you are absolutely doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we close, Michael, my comment is, thank you. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you for these years. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lastly, there was a motion on the floor by Commissioner Myers. Did you withdraw that motion? Because there was a first, there was a second?
There wasn't a second.
There was a second.
You had a motion on the floor with no second. So unless you withdraw the motion, you would call for the second, and if there is a second, you would call for public comment.
I had seconded that.
I'm sorry.
I had already seconded that.
You had already seconded. So did you want to move forward with that motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. If so, I'll take any public comment on the motion made by Commissioner Myers. Okay. Commissioner Rothman? If there are none from the public, we'll take Commissioner's comment.
Is this something we can or should vote on? Because doesn't that term run for a certain amount of time and is different than this? Or is he only on there serving because he's a commissioner?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a commissioner, until tomorrow, I'm the commissioner liaison.
Okay. I understand. But do we have, do we need to create an additional opening? Because in other words, if that's necessary, I would suggest that we move for that, because I'm definitely in favor of Michael continuing to serve in that role. I just don't know how it logistically works.
I don't have the details of who's serving and what capacity. If it is your desire to have him serve, I don't know if his term was adjusted as a commissioner, or if he was just happened to be a commissioner.
No, I'm the liaison, so I'm not a member of the Economic Development Committee at this point, so.
Were you appointed for any specific term, or just appointed?
No, it's just as a commissioner. There's always one commissioner, it's appointed commissioner liaison to the Economic Development Committee, that's all.
It would be his term as commissioner.
Commissioner, so it's ending tomorrow, yeah.
And I believe, if I can just add something that --
There's a vacancy of one of the non-commissioner members.
Correct.
But what Michael is saying is that his position on the Economic Development Committee is by a function of him being a commissioner.
It's non-voting.
And it's a non-voting, that's what I'm going to add.
I would have the impression that this is, that there is a vacancy on the committee that he could fill. But if there are no vacancies, you either have to expand the committee and then put Michael on it, or you have to, well, or there has to be a vacancy.
Can I just suggest that we table it till next month when we look into it? And I'll tell you my reasoning for that, everybody. So because it is a non-voting member, as a liaison, if there's another position and it has to be created, I'm assuming we have to decide if we're going to change the numbers? And is that committee an odd number of, I forget? Like, it seems like there's a lot of things to talk about before we do this tonight. I'm not opposing Michael being on it, I'm just wanting to make sure that we do this correctly, so.
If it is your desire to appoint him to the committee, should there be an immediate vacancy or a means by which he can't serve, you can certainly do that. If not, you can revisit it next month, once we do the research. So it may be that, I don't know how you structured it when you set it up, I don't know if there's a specific number, or, but if it's your desire to appoint him to the committee, should there be room for him, then you could do so. If you have to change it next month, you could do that as well.
So Commissioner Myers, it's your motion, but if you want to see all the --
No, I think this should be done tonight. And if we need to increase the committee by one, he's there every month. He's very important to that committee. He's made a huge difference. And I don't even think we should see one month without him. So if it means that I need to make, or someone needs to make a motion to increase the committee by one person, we're not really doing that, because he's been going there, taking up a seat, taking up a chair. Maybe he isn't a voting member, but, and that's fine. So.
That's what I said. All you have to do is pull up another chair, Mike.
Yeah. It's not the most structured committee.
It's not.
And certainly, anyone can attend.
Michael, your resignation was easier than this.
Well, I would say, you could make it subject to their bringing a seat in. If there isn't one, then talk about it next month when I'm not here.
It feels like we're overthinking this. If he's no longer commissioner tomorrow, then there's an empty seat, and the motion would just be to make him continue in that seat, right?
It's not a traditional empty seat. In his capacity as liaison, he's a non-voting, he's a non-voting member. So it's like an abnormal seat. It's like a stool.
But he would just continue on in that abnormal seat.
No, no. And again, sorry to, you know, it's always the lawyer who puts the damper on the good feelings. But you, his seat, my understanding, and we weren't prepared for this, Lauren is furiously Googling the ordinance right now, there is a maximum of 16 members on the committee, but Michael's seat is because he is a commissioner. So as of tomorrow, he's no longer a commissioner. So if there aren't 16 members on the committee, if there's a vacancy, then Michael can just slide into one of those vacancies. If there is 16 current members, not including Michael's liaison seat right now, then you need to, by ordinance, expand the committee or muscle somebody into resigning.
I can assure you that I will attend the meetings as a citizen until something happens.
That's what I was going to say. Can't you just attend? You don't have to vote, but you can attend and give your thoughts.
So now we go back to, you'll attend, and then we'll do it next month.
You're saying this, in order to create an additional seat from the 16 to 17, which really should be an odd number anyway, we need to do that by ordinance? We can't do that from a motion from the floor?
I would think you would need to do it by ordinance, because I would think that your EDC was created by ordinance at some point in time, just like all of your advisory boards are. And in order to increase the seats, you'd have to do it by ordinance, because you'd be amending the ordinance that originally created it. But again, we're caught a little unaware, we weren't --
We're all caught unaware.
We didn't know this was going to happen, so.
My fault.
Yep. No, 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 no.
And you got our emotions all.
Don't make us like you so much, we're trying to find a way on the board.
I will withdraw my motion.
We'll get it all figured out by next month.
I will, but I'd like to formally request that if it has to be done by ordinance, that that ordinance be ready for the next meeting.
I have no idea.
We can do that.
And if it doesn't have to be done by ordinance, that we be advised of that, and it be put on the agenda as a motion to appoint.
Lauren has her weekend cutout for her.
Yes, she does. Therefore, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So the motion is formally withdrawn. So if there's no further business, the meeting is adjourned, and thank you for your attendance.